Everyone, tonight is Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. I'd like to call the Pittsburgh City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And Counsel Green, I'd like to ask if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counsel Green. Madam Clerk, if you please conduct the roll call.
The following councilors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Kuschmerich, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kucher, Counselor Deena Tally, Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squallia, Counselor Van Hazinga, Counselor Walsh, and Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Zarella with a motion for suspension of the rules.
Move suspension of any rules of this body or parliamentary authority which are in conflict with either the remote participation format or the state guidelines on remote participation during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
I have a motion and second. We'll do this by roll call. Vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz. Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Squallia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kuschmerich?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
In councilors, I'd like to just pause for a moment before we go to our public forum. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the recent passing of Vincent Pousatieri Sr., the father of our city solicitor, who was with us this evening, I believe, behind his father's desk. So, in a very appropriate fashion. So I'd ask that we take a moment. Thank you, councilors. And to the Pousatieri family, our condolences as a council and as a city. Our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family at this time. Next, we have public forum. The public has been advised to contact the Clerk's office by noon today regarding any comments of not more than two minutes. And we have three individuals who have registered for this evening's meeting to speak, all to 2720 regarding the scenic roads petition. The first that will ask to join us is Peter Kettle of 44 McIntyre Road. Peter, good evening.
Good evening, President Kuschmerich, city councilors. I am at 44 McIntyre Road, Pittsburgh, as you said. I've lived here with my wife Ellen for the past 18 years. We've seen a beautiful area of Pittsburgh that should be stayed as it is and not devastated by future building that's taking place. I would like to thank City Council President Kuschmerich for working with us on the designation of these roads as scenic roads, and also for Counselor Kucher and Chief Planning Officer Michael Ara for endorsing this, but also not forgetting Chairman Zarella at last week's property committee meeting. Thank you for the support for the scenic roads. We believe that things should stay as they are. And just to let you all know, last week I had a meeting with one of the major builders, Joshua Olson. We discussed seven items, and this is just one of the items, getting the scenic roads in place. And he was very receptive, a very nice man that's going to do a lot for the city of Pittsburgh. And I'd like to thank you all, hopefully, for your endorsement again tonight to move forward with the scenic roads. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next, we have Doreen Ayers. Is Doreen with us?
Hi.
Hi, Doreen. Thanks for bearing with us. Our meetings went late, but I appreciate you reaching out. And with that, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And like Peter, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who has supported this. We've lived at 365 Williams Road for 33 years now, and Williams Road already has the protection of the Scenic Roads Act. But I'm just here tonight to say that I support the adjacent roads and neighbors so they can enjoy the designation also. So, thank you for everyone's support.
Thank you, Doreen. Next, we have Mark Dupree.
Yes. Hello. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for all your support and meeting us here today. You know, all one has to do is take a drive down the end of Main Street, up Ashram Hill Road and over to Williams Road to see and get a feel for how the atmosphere changes. At the bottom of the hill, you're on Main Street, which is five minutes from where I live, at 430 Williams. There are many multifamily homes clustered close together. Cars are parked in the street. The area is often dirty. It feels city, but not really in the best ways. But as you journey up Ashram Hill Road, you'll notice that the houses become single-family homes. There's a nice little cul-de-sac or off-road parking. And the best part, the trees. I always find it amazing how less than a mile up the hill, as you pass the old farmhouse, the area is almost unrecognizable compared to the bottom of the hill. It seems like a nice suburb. A left turn onto Williams Road, and suddenly you're pushed back in your seat with the nose of your car pointing towards the sky. Surely, you're climbing a mountain. But nope, that's just our hill. The homes become further apart. The tendency for the houses to be set back and often have a combination of trees, stone walls, or some landscaping makes the area feel quieter and less populated than it is. The area really feels country. I can't count the number of times someone's come to our home and been amazed that this is still Pittsburgh and that it's five minutes from Main Street. And the best part, Gold Bowl delivers. Sorry, Domino's lovers were a couple houses further than they deliver. But, you know, it's rare for a city to have this full experience in a short five-to-15-minute scenic drive right past Main Street. My wife and I often drove through this area when we were younger, looking at the foliage. You have Flat Rock Wildlife Sanctuary on Ashram Hill Road that we and many people we know hike. If there was going to be an area in Pittsburgh that Pittsburgh should do all it can to maintain the current country feel of, I think it's up here on the hill. Maintaining a strong tree barrier between the homes and roads makes all the difference between the suburb feel versus the country feel. I could tell you, my house doesn't have trees in front of it, and I really wish it did. While this might have some added cost to building, I think it's one of the most beautiful areas in the city. And these homes are going to sell regardless if they're a little pricey or due to longer driveways and whatnot. I'm closing. Once we clear the trees for building, they're almost never replanted. I think it's important to think of how many other areas in Pittsburgh that are this close to Main Street and the basic essentials and that still fit that country bill the way this hill does. Because once this loses the country feel up here, it will never come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree. And I apologize, I stated before, but Amara Kupiak did indeed register, and we missed it. So, Amara, I'd like to welcome you and invite you to unmute, and you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Amara Kupiak, and I'm here with my husband John and our daughter. We live at 70 McIntyre, a neighbor. We moved here a couple of years ago for the neighbors and for just the beautiful, unique this area. So, just kind of what everyone else has already said, we appreciate your support on keeping this scenic and hopefully making this a scenic route. Thank you.
Thank you, Amara. And that concludes this evening's public forum. Next, we have, if there is no objection, we'll take the Appointments Committee. First, earlier this evening, the Appointments Committee met and took up the following matters. There were three reappointments. First, for the Director of Human Resources, Ms. Susan Davis, term to expire December 31st, 2022. Counselors, please note, it was amended to reflect, to strike the word "executive", and for the term to reflect a reduction in one year to comply with city code to reflect the year 2022. That was adopted for zero as amended. Executive Director of Community Development, term to expire November 17th, 2023, of Mr. Thomas Skorowski. That was adopted by a vote of five to zero. Executive Director of the Council on Aging, term to expire November 17th, 2023, of Ms. Joan Goodwin. That was adopted by a vote of four to zero. And the new appointment member of the Historical Commission, term to expire November 1st, 2023, of Ms. Mignan P. Donahue. That too was adopted by a vote of four to zero.
Mr. President, I'd like to pull HR.
Counselor, are you making a motion to approve all three except for?
Okay. Except for HR.
Second.
Do I have a motion? Sorry, thank you. I have a motion and seconds to approve. I apologize, Counsel Green. I know you're asking to recuse yourself. Would you like us to also pull out Tom Skorowski as well?
Are you asking me that?
Well, I know you have to recuse yourself. There was a motion on the floor to adopt the Appointments Committee report excluding Susan Davis.
I will recuse my.
Okay, understood. I just ask if you can mute your mic. Mute your video as well just momentarily. And to our viewing public, Counsel Green is recusing herself because she serves on commissions and other boards with the candidates that are before us. With that, I have a motion and seconds to adopt the Appointments Committee report excluding the appointment of Ms. Susan Davis. Speaking on the motion, I have, is Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to speak. I'm in favor of all the appointments, obviously. I wanted to especially speak about Mr. Skorowski. I have been the most impressed with his development since we first appointed him three years ago. This is a person who, I understand, has a great team with him. But, you know, as the leader of that team, he has demonstrated a level of competency that really stands out to me amongst many of the departments in this city. I look at the accomplishments of his office under his tenure. The tens of millions of dollars he's brought into the city through grants, through the federal and state level, most recently the transformative grant from the state for over $3 million for transforming downtown and $500,000 for complete streets, was the real climactic point of his tenure here, in my opinion, because that is something that we have been waiting on for decades in order to convert Main Street back to where it should be. It's too way, too lame. And his office was able to accomplish that. You know, the state just doesn't give out those kinds of grants. So, that's just one little snippet. There's many others, historical designations, TDI District, you name it. And his knowledge base and his level of understanding of state and federal grant laws and community development itself speaks for itself. And the fact that there is so much activity taking place on Main Street today and will be taking place in the future is a testament to him and his leadership in his offices, hard work. So, I would be okay if he were appointed for six more years, but, you know, three will have to do. So, I thank him for his service. And I understand that Ms. Davis presents herself every time we have contract negotiations.
Counselor, you'll actually have a chance to?
I'm sorry, she's being left out. My apologies. That's all I had to say then. Thank you.
I'll just add, at the risk of turning this into a love fest for Mr. Skorowski, I'll just, I can't help but add that we're an incredibly fortunate city to have someone of his skillset, experience, and expertise. And, you know, I think it would be fair to say that the success of any mayoral administration can be defined by the people that he or she surrounds himself by. And with that, you know, the appointments of Tom Skorowski three years ago and the reappointment today is not just a home run for the city of Pittsburgh and for this mayor's administration as a grand slam. We are truly a fortunate city. And he doesn't just have the expertise, he has the passion for the work he does, and he has the passion for the city that he serves. And that is a rare combination. And, you know, I think it's, unfortunately, public employees are often, you know, the targets of folks that say, you know, they're doing it for money or benefits. And I think Tom is, it typifies the public employee that I've come to see, which is someone who goes above and beyond, who works long hours, late days, as evidenced by the fact that he's here at 7:50 PM and probably started his day more than 12 hours ago. Never complains about the long hours, never complains about having to go the extra mile. Those are the, that typifies the Pittsburgh experience of our municipal employees. Tom is as good as they come. Again, we're a fortunate city, and I'm thrilled that he'll be here for another three years to continue serving our residents and our businesses. So, thank you. With that, I also have Counselor Zarella looking to speak to the motion.
I'll keep this really quick. Everyone's already said most of what I would have said, but I just wanted to point out that Tom has also put in an immense amount of work on this entire zoning overhaul that we're undergoing. It's quite probably the biggest legislative project in certainly my term on the council. And he's been keeping the ball rolling the whole way. It wouldn't really be happening without his efforts.
With that, I have a motion and seconds to approve. We will, unless there is any objection, we'll do this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is adopted. Congratulations to Mr. Skorowski, Ms. Goodwin, and Ms. Donahue. Thank you for your service to our city. Thank you for all that you do and look forward to working with you in the future. Next, we have the appointment of Ms. Susan Davis, term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and seconds to approve. Speaking on the motion, seeing no speaking, we will do this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, you were muted.
Sorry. Counselor Green.
Counselor Green. Recused yourself for this.
Oh, I apologize. Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kuschmerich?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
No.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is nine to one.
Nine to one motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Davis, and I want to thank her for her past three years of service and the service over the next two years to come. Thank you very much. With that, we'll see if we can get, FATV, is it possible to bring Counsel Green back in?
Looks like she logged off. She'll have to log back in.
All right, we'll pause for a moment, see if we can give her a chance to join us. And next, we have City Property Committee. Are you joining us now? Great. Just waiting for Counselor Green audio to connect. Can you hear us?
I'm back.
All right, wonderful. Rejoining us is Counsel Green. Next, we have a City Property Committee meeting of November 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee, there are two items listed on the agenda, but as has been the case in the past several months, only one of them, 22720, was actually taken up. The other remains on the table. This was Counselors Kuschmerich and Kucher to designate Alpine Road, McIntyre Road, Shelton Road, and Stickney Road as scenic roads as stipulated by the Scenic Road Act, MGL Chapter 40, Section 15(c). The committee unanimously recommended that we hold this, send it to the Conservation Commission, and, I'm sorry, I don't remember the other commission.
Planning.
Planning, yes. Planning and conservation, and hold until we have received a recommendation from one or the other as the law requires.
Motion to approve the report?
Second.
I have a motion and seconds to approve the report of the City Property Committee. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Fleming?
Yes, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of all the residents that came forward with this petition. And I hope that more areas of Pittsburgh are designated scenic because it's amazing when you leave the Main Street area of Pittsburgh, the beauty and just the trees and the country feel that there is. People just, like they said, you leave this outside of Main Street, and people are amazed that this is still Pittsburgh. So, I'd like to see more of these petitions come forward and designate these as scenic areas. That's all. With that, I approve.
I agree with Counsel Fleming and the folks that spoke during the public forum. It's the reason I co-sponsored the petition with Counsel Kucher. And truly, I think this is a unique area, and we have several unique areas to the city of Pittsburgh that, you know, it's so rare that you have an urban city, a gateway city, that has the rural assets that we do. We need to protect them. We need to ensure that they're here, not just in this current generation, but for future generations. It is both a gem and a beautiful thing that we have, but it's also a tremendous value to our city as well in terms of the property value that these areas add. We need to preserve that. We should want to preserve that. And, you know, again, I don't think we're saying that you can't develop in that area. It's that we are encouraging responsible development that preserves the uniqueness and the scenic beauty that these areas have. And I don't think that's an unreasonable burden to put on folks who are adding developments in these areas. With that, we have Counsel Kucher.
Thank you, President Kuschmerich. I want to put forward my support for this as well. Mirroring your comments as well, that we, not only is this a unique part of Pittsburgh, which I love, I love to see, I go for drives around, but you also have to take into consideration, there are also technical issues with all this development going on. You know, most people in Pittsburgh don't understand that there's no city water, there's no city sewer up there. So, everything is either by well or by septic tank. And, you know, you start adding in houses and you start drawing from the same well, the water's going to run out up there. Unless the city wants to pay the exorbitant amount to bring city water up there, now this is what is going to need to be done.
Next, we have Counselor Deena Tally.
Just a clarification. Did I hear the chairman say correctly from property that it's required by law to send this to conservation and planning?
I'll ask Counselor Zarella to clarify.
Yes, the statute as written does say that the council may make this designation on recommendation from one of those committees.
One of them.
Yeah, it doesn't require approval from both of them. We just have to get a recommendation from one of them. It could also be from the Historical Commission, but the committee agreed that that was not particularly appropriate to the specific road.
So, we also have Counselor Deena Tally, if you wouldn't mind. We also have Mr. Skorowski, who I consulted before even submitting this petition, who's very familiar with these designations. If there's no objection, I'd like to ask him to speak.
Okay. Sorry, just briefly, and as an aside, thank you all for the kind words earlier. That really meant a lot and much appreciated. With the scenic road question, I guess my recommendation would be to send it to Planning Board for their recommendation because at the end of the day, what the scenic road designation provides for is additional oversight, both from the tree warden but also from Planning Board. So, you know, essentially, the Planning Board would be approving or denying these requests in the future, and therefore, I think it would be appropriate to get their recommendation. That being said, this certainly aligns with the goals of our Economic Development Strategic Plan. You know, one of the key cornerstones of our mission statement was that we are placed with urban amenities, but, you know, rural picturesque beauty. And I think nothing typifies that more than the statements we heard earlier. And we'd love to preserve that in areas like this, and I think this is something that the Planning Board would certainly get around. So, thank you for putting this petition forward.
Yeah, I just wanted to get that clarification. The residents should be made aware then of these hearings that these boards will hold. Because, you know, I don't want them to think that they just need to speak to us. Apparently, the Boards, Planning Board, has more power on this than we do because without their recommendation, we can't adopt this. So, it's imperative that we have them go to that meeting and speak. I am in support of this regardless of what the Board says. I actually live on one of the very few scenic roads in the city and designated scenic roads in the city, and I have seen firsthand in the seven years I've lived on this street the benefit of that designation. And understanding the Williams Road, McIntyre Road, Alpine Road area, it's very similar to ours. I think it's long overdue for them to have that designation. So, I would say publicly here that I impress upon the Planning Board to please adopt this. And really, all it will be to do is give them an added amount of oversight over development that goes on up there. If anything, it adds more decision-making on their end than less. So, I can't see why they wouldn't support this. So, I'm confident they will. But I hope they do, and I am in support of it as well. But if that's what has to be done legally, then so be it. Thank you.
And just a procedural question, I want to confirm, Counselor Zarella, the committee included referring it or sending it to the Planning Board already. So, if we move forward with adopting the committee's reports, it should or it will be directed to the Planning Board. Is that correct?
That is correct. It will also be sent to the Conservation Commission just because we felt they should probably weigh in on this as well, particularly because of the water issues.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Zarella. And now we have Counselor Kucher speaking for the second time.
Thank you, President Kuschmerich. I want to just talk about what Counselor Deena Tally has also suggested. I am in full support of this. We need to get this done because if the Planning Board has more power of the city council, they're just putting up houses. You know, they're developing a plot plan, putting up houses, and, you know, drilling wells and putting in septic tanks. It's going to be a disaster eventually, and we need to get some control over what happens up there. So, I understand, you know, everybody likes the development, but this is a very unique area of Pittsburgh, and it cannot be lost.
Counselor.
I think the Scenic Road Act is an important tool to preserve scenic byways and preserving trees and stone walls along these roads. But I think it's important to consider that the Scenic Road Act is not a tool to restrict development. It's not designed to prevent a developer from developing land that they legally entitled to develop. It's not intended to preserve aquifers or water resources. There are other city regulations to do this. So, I think we all just need to keep in mind what the purpose of this specific act is, what its intent is, and what it will do, and that these other issues are a side issue that are not relevant to the expansion of this act to these roads. Thank you.
And I'll just add that, you know, I think Counselor Van Hazinga reinforces a good point. If the Scenic Roads Act does exactly that, it preserves, you know, scenic roads. And that's the aspect in particular. And to residents in that area, we need to make sure that we're utilizing the other tools, the other boards and commissions to ensure that we're protecting the other assets and issues that you've discussed with us and that have been brought up in this. So, with that, I have a motion and a second to accept the City Property Committee reports. We'll do this by unanimous consent unless there is any objection from the body. Seeing none, it is so adopted. Next, in councilors, I apologize, I took that out of order. Next, we'll hear a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Squallia?
Yes, we have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Yes, we have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking on the motion, we'll take this by unanimous consent, unless we have any objection. It is adopted. Thank you, Counselor Squallia. And next communications from his honor, the mayor, counselors, we have five letters concerning appointments for animal control officer, for the council on aging, permanent reserve police officers, full-time firefighters. And the Human Rights Commission, all of which Stan referred to the Appointments Committee scheduled for Tuesday, December fifteenth. We also have an additional communication from Ann Cervantes and Tom Skorowski, Executive Director of Planning and Community Development. Regarding the parking study, which was also presented earlier this evening to the Public Safety Committee. That will be placed on file in the City Clerk's office. And also just a reminder to the public that the tax classification hearing will, is is scheduled on Tuesday, December eighth. Immediately following the Finance Committee meeting, which is scheduled to begin at six PM. Next, on the agenda, we have the Finance Committee meeting of November twenty-fourth, Counselor Dean Italy.
Thank you, Finance met and took up three orders. First one was for two hundred thousand dollars for a grant from the CD, from the CARES Act, US Department of Housing and Urban Development. For small business assistance. Two thirty twenty was in order to accept the expenditure of funds from the Department of Housing and Community Development. Eightways Rehabilitation Program Grant for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is to provide funding to repair code violations in two to four unit properties. And two thirty-one twenty was in order to accept expenditure on a grant from the Mass Department of Conservation Recreation. Mass Trails Program for thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars to initiate a consistent and coordinated wayfinding system for the city's trail networks. All were adopted unanimously. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve, speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
Yeah. The reason why I asked to speak on this, I'm all in favor of it, because I I voted for it. But I just want to make it clear to to the city councils and that. Yep. If we're gonna give out money to small businesses and they're not doing what this, what they're doing for their proper PPE. I feel that we shouldn't be giving them any money. Because I've been getting phone calls about different businesses not following the PP, PPP rules on this COVID. And then on the two thirty-one. I'm not a fan of signs, but I told Tom S. that I would go along with this one here. I think we ought to start looking at the signs throughout the city, we got signs up that the businesses are no longer there. And we're be, we're being polluted with with signs throughout the city. And you're ruining the beauty of our city by all these signs, every time you turn around, there's signs, thousands of signs. So that's why I wanted to talk. But I'm more concerned about the CARES Act, I don't think we should give money if people are not following the rules. That's how I feel.
Well, certainly rely on our our Board of Health and and Director Curry to ensure that businesses are following the, all of the recommendations and guidance from the state and municipal level. And so encourage both public and and counselors to avail themselves of the city's Board of Health. For any violations that they see, but I do believe that it's crucial that we disperse CARES Act funding and assistance for for our businesses. They certainly need it as we go through these unprecedented times. That said, I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report. Unless there is any objection, we'll do this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection. The Finance Committee report of November twenty-fourth has been adopted. Next, we have Planning Board meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. The report consisted of zero twenty-nine twenty, Fitchburg Planning Board to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance. As part of phase one of an ordinance update to make clarifications in the table of principal uses as outlined in the petition. As this was a matter for discussion and counselors, I just ask that we we accept their reports. I have a motion.
Second.
And second to accept the Planning Board reports of zero twenty-nine twenty. Speaking on the motion, unless there is, speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarella.
I just wanted to note for anyone who has gone through this fairly thoroughly, there are some areas that will still require some minor tweaks in the language and in the details. That is acknowledged upfront, this is not the final ordinance product. And I assume we will be having a large discussion about it as a council at some future date.
I I have Tom Skorowski raising his hand with a quick, I think, clarification as well.
Yeah, just one quick, it mentioned phase one of the zoning ordinance, this is actually phase two. And it it will be going to Legislative Affairs in December and then in front of the full council in the new year. And this is one bundle of a three bundle phase, as Counselor Zarella indicated before, this is quite the undertaking. So in any event, I just wanted to make those clarifications.
Motion to amend to read phase two.
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend zero twenty-nine twenty to reflect phase two. Speaking on that motion. Seeing none, we'll do this. I think we have to do this by roll call votes. For unamendment. Nope, Counselor Zarella is shaking his head no, and I'm going to trust his judgment on this. Unless there is any objection to amending zero twenty-nine twenty, we'll take this by unanimous consent. It is amended and before the body.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Motion and second to approve the Planning Board report of zero twenty-nine twenty as amended, speaking on the motion. Seeing none, unless there is objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. It is adopted, thank you, counselors, and thank you, Mr. Skorowski, for that clarification as well. Next, Public Safety Committee Oral Report Meeting of December first, Counselor Green.
Yes, thank you, President Kusmeric, tonight. Public Safety Met, we had three items before us, petition zero eighty-eight twenty. Sergeant Dan Boudreau, Fitchburg Police Department, Counselor Amy Green and Counselor Schultz to amend chapter one sixty-nine of the city code by adding. No parking on Ella Street, north side, three hundred and fifty feet from South Street to Burnap Street. And south side, starting fifty-four feet from South Street to Burnap Street. No parking Kingsbury Street, east and west from Ella Street to Drury Lane. No parking Drury Lane, north and south side of the entire street. Monday through Friday. I'm sorry, that should read no parking Drury Lane, north and south side, entire street, Monday to Friday, eight AM to ten AM. And then again, two PM to four PM. Leave current, no parking at all times and place. That was passed. Petition one twenty-eight twenty, Council Paul Boishman to petition that all applications for a dealer license must be for ten cars minimum. That failed to pass, three in opposition to that petition, so it did not pass, but zoning. Will look to address that further. Petition two twelve twenty, Counselors Dean Italy and Schultz on behalf of Beatrice LeBlanc. To install a no parking sign in front of thirty-one Spruce Street that was given leave to withdraw. And Sergeant Boudreau said that there's been no issue since Officer Chabot went and talked to the residents.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt the Public Safety Committee report. Speaking on the motion. Seeing none, we'll do this unless there is any objection, we'll do this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, the Public Safety Committee report has been adopted. Next, orders finance, items two thirty-eight twenty, up to and including two forty-three twenty, Stan referred to finance. Orders other two forty-four twenty, order correcting council approved order two thirty-two twenty. That had misidentified Zero Battles Ave of one eighty-six dash nine dash zero and correctly correctly identifying it as Zero Battles Ave one eighty-six dash nine dash A. And allowing Mayor Stephen Eldina Tally to place additional conservation restrictions on Zero Battles Ave one eighty-six dash nine dash A. To comply with the special legislative. Counselors, I'd ask for suspension of the rule.
So moved.
Second.
The motion and second for suspension on two forty-four twenty, it's by roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
No.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Italy.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is ten to one.
Ten to one, motion carries, two forty-four twenty is before us.
Move to approve two forty-four twenty.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve two forty-four twenty, speaking on the motion. Unless there is any objection. We'll take this by. Madam Clerk, can we take this by unanimous consent?
I believe you can.
Okay. Seeing no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Two forty-four twenty has been adopted. Thank you, counselors. Next, we have ordinance, two forty-five twenty, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-seven entitled Streets and Sidewalks to add article eight entitled snow or ice on motor vehicles by adding sections one fifty-seven ninety dash ninety-four. Duty to remove snow or ice on motor vehicles and one fifty-seven ninety-five sanctions as outlined in the enclosed ordinance referenced petition zero zero eight twenty in first reading.
Move to send two forty-five twenty to its first reading.
Second.
Motion and second to send two forty-five twenty to its first reading, speaking on the motion. Seeing none, we'll do this by unanimous consent, unless there is any objection from counselors. Seeing no objection, it is it is sent to its first reading. Next, we have two forty-six twenty petition that stands referred to the Public Works Committee. And that concludes this evening's agenda. I have a motion and I have a second to adjourn. Unless there is any objection from counselors, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.